All right, it's Monday, April 10th, 2023. It's 30:00 PM and we will call the City of Mayor, regular city council meeting to order. We can start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I have no additions, Mayor.
Right here, none. I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That'll take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. That will move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. And that will take us to business items to consider adoption of resolution 2023-16, providing issuance and sale of $775,000 Geo Street Reconstruction Bonds Series 2023A.
I'd like to introduce Keith with Eller's Financial Services. Todd couldn't quite make it this evening. He had done another commitment, so Keith is here to do probably a far better job than Todd could. And that's on camera, so he'll see that.
Appreciate the introduction. Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a resolution and the sale results for the general obligation bond. Again, these bonds are being sold to finance various planned street reconstruction projects throughout the city. At the end of March, city staff and Ellers held a call, a rating call with S&amp;P, at which time S&amp;P affirmed the city's double-A rating with a stable outlook. So that's great to see. Just to take a second to go over high-level points of that report, they noted a strong economy, stable economy still, a strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity. The one thing that they did note was a weak debt profile with a high overall net direct debt. I believe there's about 60% of the debt that the city has outstanding is going to amortize over the next 10 years. For S&amp;P to upgrade you in that category, that 60% may need to be higher, around the 70%, 75% mark. But overall, great results with that rating report, which ultimately led to the great sale results that we saw here today. So we held the sale this morning at 10:00 AM and we received three bids. So on the size of bond issue, that's a relatively good number of bidders. We did receive a rather large premium in the amount of $55,000 and we ended up reducing the principal amount of the bond. So instead of 755,000 or 775,000, it's actually 720,000. So less overall interest will be paid from that. So based on the bids we received this morning, it's recommended toward the sale of the bonds to TD Securities, New York, New York, since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a true interest cost of 3.2554%. Just for some contextual purposes, back in January, when we were starting to run the preliminary bond runs and the current environment with the interest rates and so forth, we were assuming that is going to be around 3.9%. So that's about 0.7% less than what we were anticipating. So with that, and then the premium that the city received overall was really good sale results. With that, I can turn it back over to the mayor and the council for any questions that you may have.
Well, I don't understand what you mean by premium and why the bond is less than what we need.
Yep. So essentially, the bond investor is providing the city $55,000 of cash because they're hedging against the secondary market when they go to sell these bonds after they purchase it from you for that interest rate risk. So they're providing you $720,000 of principal, but you just have higher coupon, higher interest rates on various maturities. And so that allows them to make sure that they can sell it within the secondary market. So that's why you essentially get a premium and you're retaining that premium to reduce the bond size, the principal amount that you need.
Interesting. Still a little above my head, but a little bit more understanding.
Any other questions?
Oh, can you also explain to me the 60% and why to get a better rating in the future? Will you be closer? Is that the percentage of debt?
Yeah, so that's your net direct debt.
What does that mean?
Based on the general fund. So it's debt that is supported by your general fund. So Geo bonds, bank loans, notes, stuff like that, that's net direct debt. It takes out debt that's supported by revenue. It's just looking specifically at the property tax with the general fund. And so why they want to see that percentage higher is because they want to see the debt retiring quickly. And so since it's at 60% right now, typically S&amp;P likes to see that higher around 70%, 75%, 80%. So that's the only thing, but it's not something that you can change. Obviously, the debt that you have outstanding has schedules. You can call them early and stuff like that, but as far as changing that, it just takes time.
So is it forecasted to improve in the next five years? I mean, looking at what we've got out there and what's maturing?
Correct. Yes.
So we see improvement on that percentage in the next five years?
Correct. And currently, you're not anticipating to issue any additional debt within the next 12 months, or at least not that we're aware of. So S&amp;P noted that in their report as well. So that's not something they're necessarily concerned about. It was a small part of the report. A lot of focus looks at the economy, the management, your liquidity and budgetary flexibility and so forth.
Anything else?
No, that answered my question.
Perfect. Well, thank you for coming in. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-16, providing for the issuance and sale of $720,000 general obligation, Street Reconstruction Plan Bonds Series 2023A, and levying a tax for the payments.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. So Keith, thank you again for coming in. I appreciate it. All right, Nick, that'll take us to consider approval of hiring Public Works Worker Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick second. Thank you. So we went through the hiring process for both the Public Works Worker Two position and the accounting clerk position. And the Personnel Committee has come to the recommendation that out of the 13 applicants that initially applied with four being interviewed for the Public Works Worker Two position, they are recommending hiring Scott Tyson to the position at a recommended rate of pay of $24.89.
Any questions on the Public Works Worker Two? I'll look for a motion to hire Scott Tyson at $24.89 per hour.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Position, please.
And then for the accounting clerk position, we again had 13 applications. We interviewed five for that. And the recommendation coming up from the Personnel Committee is to hire Tracy Schaefer for that and at a recommended rate of pay of $30 per hour.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve a hiring of Tracy Schaefer as the accounting clerk for $30 per hour.
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Health. We have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us then to 11 wage adjustments. Consider wage adjustment.
The Personnel Committee then discussed Brian Lebkey's current wage in relation to what we're hiring Scott Tyson for. And Brian's current wage is 2306 per hour. And given the experience that both Brian has and Scott has coming into the positions, they're not exactly the same, but they're similar in nature, what they're coming in with, they felt it would be appropriate to adjust Brian's wage from 2306 per hour to 2489 per hour to match the recommendation for Scott Tyson. If anybody on the Personnel Committee would like to add anything?
So we looked at it and with all the candidates, this position, because we already have one existing and we're doing an exact duplicate, just the wages that we got to pay, they're coming up near the $24.89 per hour. And that's right in the middle of the range. And based on all the applicants and their qualifications, that's where everything was coming in. We had 13 applicants and they were all coming in with that or higher. So as we looked at it, because we're mirroring an exact employee they have or position, they have near now almost the same qualifications with when you take Brian's two years of being here versus what Scott's bringing in, they're equal. And we thought it made sense then to move Brian up to equal that because they do mirror each other. We thought it made a lot of sense. I think we've shown by the candidates and the salaries that they're requiring that if Brian did leave the organization tomorrow or the city tomorrow to replace him, we're going to be at 2489 to replace him for his qualifications. So we thought that made sense. Any other questions on that?
So are we looking at the other employees from that similar standpoint of, right, like, I mean, inflation is a thing. People leave jobs to make more money.
At this time, we did not, for the fact of because we had an exact duplicate person we're bringing, it was easy to do. Now trying to like the accounting clerk versus the city clerk, they're different jobs, different qualifications, different degrees that they had. So they didn't really match up. So based on we have our salary set, the contract set, the union contract, we left those alone until next contract negotiations.
And so, and there's no concern with the contract negotiation of just giving a pay increase?
How do you mean? It doesn't violate anything with that. It doesn't violate.
Without, I mean, there's nothing.
No.
Okay.
We're good to go on that front.
And, right, I mean, we had this when we were in the situation with the Public Works Supervisor leaving and the negotiations and the precedents that being set. Now here we are again. That's my only comment.
And I agree. And I agree with you. And I think even back then, when we're doing it, my personal opinion is, and they're a little bit different situations, but my opinion is we don't get into negotiations on these kinds of things. But taking my personal opinions out of it and doing what I feel is best for the community and our residents, our taxpayers, and I do believe this is, I do believe if we lost a Public Works Worker Two with the same qualification what we're bringing in, we will be going at the 2489 and replace that person.
Or more.
Or more, or more.
Yep.
So that's for me where I was coming from on the Personnel Committee and why the recommendation.
Yeah, it's just.
I see what you're, I get what you're saying.
Managing people. It's like today you're worth 2306 an hour, but because we're going to hire the other guy, now you're worth more money to us. That's the, that doesn't feel good. I'm not saying he's not worth it and we shouldn't pay it and it wouldn't cost us that and then some. The scenario and the situation, the, I mean, again, so do we need to look at every position within the city and see if we're comparable? Because I would argue that anybody could leave and we could pay more money. I mean, when we had to replace our city administrator, we paid more money for the new administrator, right? Like, that's...
Based on qualifications, but yes. I mean, yeah, you're right. And I think at that time, for me, that's when I would take a relook at things and see how things are on the market. I mean, things change, right?
Yeah.
Three years, that one contract, so that things change.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem. I think, go ahead.
If during the Personnel Committee discussions, a part that we looked at is, as I've been gearing up for the 2020, so our contracts end July 2024, and that's a negotiating period that's coming up. In looking at that, I got ahold of the classification compensation study that was done, I think in 2018, 2019 was the last one that was done. And part of what I'm doing is working on doing one in-house. I know how they're done, so I'm working on putting one together like that. Again, to your point, at least from my perspective, I want to pay competitive wages to retain good staff and to attract good staff should the time come. So to that point, I'm drawing things together in preparation for next year's negotiating round, when we bring that together and make sure that we're commensurate and market competitive. And when I get that, I just don't have the data together quite yet, but I'm working on it. I think that's what you're
Yeah.
Going towards.
I think it opened our eyes when we were in and received the 13 applications and seeing all the ranges. And that was one of our questions. What was their desired range? That we definitely are on the low end and we know that our current employee is just as valuable and that we wanted to make sure that we are starting to be more at a market level. And then my assumption was that we'd be having further discussions in the personnel to look at everybody before budgeting for next year and especially because the contract's up in July of next year, making sure that we are competitive so that we can retain the employees we have because I feel that they're very valuable.
Agreed. And I'm not arguing that factor, speaking against that. It's just the message that's being sent, right? Like, I think I would have felt better if the recommendation came at last meeting and then we made our offer, right? Because it's like, if we had, what you're telling Brian is if we had a candidate that was only asking for $22 an hour, he's not worth any more money. But because we have another candidate, then we think he's worth more money. That's the challenge that I'm struggling with.
Is that 2489 pay rate, is that based off of what we're seeing other cities offer for a starting wage in this position? Or is this based off of what people are writing down as what they wanted for pay?
Again, getting back to what I mentioned before, I've started pulling some of that data together, but I don't have enough of it to get together to give you what that market looks like.
So again, did we just have, you know, 13 candidates that were, hey, I want to work for a city and I'm going to put down a bunch of money and if I get it, great. If I don't, I don't. And so we're, I mean, I don't know the answer, right? I mean, I hire people.
Some may have, I mean, some were way overqualified from what we were looking for at a Public Works Worker Two. They have all their licenses. It's just not what we needed. So, I mean, they were in the 35, you know, dollar an hour range. And so that just didn't match in with it. So, I mean, I totally see where you're coming from. I don't, I'm not, I can't even argue it. I don't, I see what you're saying. And again, it's trying to do what's right and what's fair. And, yeah, and sometimes you look at, and that's where I struggle a little bit with private sector versus public sector. And it's a little bit different. And in my mind, I want to do what I think is right for the community and our taxpayers and I think, and our employees also. But this is by no means saying our other two employees are not valued by any means or they should be relooked at. But some of that, because of this situation, those just haven't come up. If we were hiring another city clerk and they were exactly even and what we're getting from a new person with maybe a little more experience coming in, but the other one's been here long enough, they're about, it would be the same thing in my mind. But it's just difficult to try to manage through some of that, to have someone leave and the money it's going to cost to get someone in here. If some of, and again, not saying any of the employees would leave. I don't think that. But I think just seeing through our contract negotiations, we try to look at things fair. Yeah. And they have been approved and we certainly don't have to do it, you know, but, yeah. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah. And I just, right, like, I want to thank the Personnel Committee. I know you guys had to take time to do the interviews and, you know, have the conversation. And again, our employees are valuable. I mean, you look at, you know, 90 inches of snowplow. They worked a lot of nights and weekends and crappy hours, right? And, you know, Kyle couldn't do that alone. Brian couldn't do that alone, right? So I don't want to say that I don't value, I just, you know, I want to pay a fair wage. I want to retain our employees. It costs us more money to find somebody and retrain and acclimate and all of that. I just, and again, I mean, if we're going to look at it and we're going to put it into negotiations and talk through that, I think I'm okay with it. It's just.
Well, we'll have negotiations. No matter. We're going to have that. We'll get, it'll be time to start relooking at things. Yeah. It'll be time to start relooking at things. But, yeah, like I said, I don't want you to factor in anything of what the Personnel Committee did as taking the time to do this and those sorts of things. This is just a recommendation from us. If you don't agree, you won't offend the Personnel Committee by any means on that. I mean, we were, that was our role to do this, so we did it. And here's what we came up with. So you certainly won't personally offend me. I can't speak for the entire committee, but it's certainly a recommendation that we thought was fair.
Yeah. No, and again, right, like, I mean, your role was to hire two people and you went beyond that, which again, for the better of the community and all of that, and I recognize that and I appreciate that.
Any other discussion or clarifications needed? Hearing none, then I'll look for a motion to increase Brian Lebkey's wage from $23.06 per hour to $24.89 per hour.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right. Consider approval of computer use policy.
So two changes made in the computer use policy based upon our discussions from last go-around. The first was regarding emails, adding the line, if open, notify the city. If there's unknown senders, notify city administrator and/or IT consultant immediately. And then at the bottom of the page, change from six months to three months for password changes. And those were the two on the policy.
Any questions on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the computer use policy.
Motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? I think my only couple of comments, Nick, are one, I'm still, I was just looking at the eight, you know, the eight-digit factoring and I did a little research and it seems like eight is kind of the minimum at the lower end of things, you know, and some will go up to 64, you know, or the capabilities or not, the companies make you do it. But I just want to confirm, you know, along with Jimmy, who's our IT person and he's our expert in this and he feels eight is good, I'm okay with that. I just, because we're going hand in hand with another policy coming in for an electronic thing, I think they're going to be okay from that aspect. I think we've mitigated what we need to, but I just want to just reconfirm that eight is, eight is an acceptable amount for password protection.
Capitals, special characters, or just, you want all lowercase, you want to mix it up?
Yep. So it includes capitals, lowercase, numeric and special characters.
Characters.
And then we're also required, when available, that we have to have multi-factor authentication.
Here.
Whenever it's available. And some we can't dictate if a vendor doesn't offer it. So if it's simply not available, we can't take advantage of it. So in any circumstance where it is available, and if it's 95% available, we'll take advantage of it. I'm sorry, I missed the question. I was on special characters and then when multi-factor authentication may not be available.
Multi-factor authentication will come for the electronic transfer policy. So I'm okay with that then. And again, it's something we can certainly change in the future if need be.
Yes, Jimmy did review the computer use policy.
And then how about, is there an auto lockout? If it's logged on so many times with the wrong password, does it lock them out after so many?
No, that was not in the policy.
Well, yeah, I guess that wouldn't be part of the policy, but do we have that set up? Is it set up through our IT to do that?
I would have to ask Jimmy.
Okay, cool. I think that's something we should follow up on and probably do. But I would agree, I don't think that has to be a policy because that's something we'll just, we can just, we can just have it that way. But I think it should lock, lock out. And then I think down the line, as we get this implemented and work through it, I know there's a lot of stuff in there. You can't do this. You can't hook this up. You can't. And we have the policy. How are we going to do an enforcement or somehow periodically check to make sure some of this stuff isn't being done, be it quarterly, annually, every six months, you know, just to see if some of these. But I think that's for further discussions and work sessions down the road. But I do want to, policy's great, but if we're not checking it or enforcing it like some of our others, I think we should talk about that down the road.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Then, right, the League of Minnesota Cities, I forget that gentleman's name, came in, he's gonna
Christian Garkelson.
Right, gonna work with you and Jimmy. I think he started with Jimmy kind of getting that. So if something comes back that is either not included in this policy or should be enhanced based on their recommendations, then we can tweak this policy, right? And we would review that. So, right, if they say it should be 12 characters, it should be changed every 30 days, it should be
Yes.
blah, blah, blah.
Yep. So these policies that we just don't pass, I mean, they're set in stone for eternity. Living documents as recommendations come up to make these better and improve them. We certainly want to incorporate that.
Okay.
Another discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. And then that'll take us to the safe electronic transfer and payment policy.
So based upon the last meeting, there were no additional changes for the safe electronic transfers and payments policy.
Look for a motion to approve the safe electronic transfers and payment policy.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? And my only discussion is, again, as I talked last time, Nick, if you could go to page 38, and I think it just got brought up here from the audience about the, oh, your 38's different than that. Oh. Page one of the policy, I guess. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And it's in the process to present the fraud. It's talking about the multi-factor authentication, when available. I'm still stuck on that. Now, and maybe you were explaining that just now and I missed it. Why wouldn't it be available? Why would it not be?
I don't know. I don't know the entirety of the internet and how all things offered. I guess on that, the point is, is we'll take advantage of it when it is available. It's not that we would actively try to not do it.
Yeah.
It's just how it's worded says, when available, we'll take advantage of. I don't know.
Is this for, like, if you're making a payment through a, somebody else's website? Is that what we're talking about? Where, like, when I log into my Amazon account, I have to do a two-step verification where it sends me a text message when I do my bank account? So if that, if that external
Yeah.
Banking account or whatever does not require it, we will always set up two-step authentication.
Right.
Correct?
But if someplace
If it doesn't offer it.
Right. We can't do multi-factor because it doesn't exist for that particular, what it may be.
That's why the language is that.
But employee portals and city intranets all have it, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So it would never then be when available? Oh, oh, we should, oh, so.
Like if you're at security.
We should use it when it's available at our end user. Is that what that's saying?
Yeah, for, no, for us as employees. So, okay, so let.
Use an example.
No, language wise, it does not matter because if you take out one of it, if you leave one available in, you use it whenever it's available. And if it's available hundred percent of the time, then you're using it. So if you just take out one available, you're still one hundred percent of the time. The meaning does not change if you remove when available.
So like, for example, Wells Fargo, I just added two-step verification. They offered it, but I didn't actually use utilize it, but now I do, for example. So if I would make sure that all whatever accounts were, you know, if it's a credit card or a bank.
Yeah.
That we have the two-step, like you have to select it as an option. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
But if that they don't offer a two-step, we can't use it because they don't offer it.
Then I then I think we cut a check. Don't do anything electronic then. So I'm reading that. I mean, I read that as the city stuff should utilize multi-factor authentications. And our computers are all set up that we're we're using, we're utilizing it now. So I don't, again, I'm not an IT person, so I'm having a hard, I have a hard time with this, but it doesn't seem right to me because on the follow, after that, it says following our processes to prevent fraudulent dispersion. Well, multi-factor authentication to me is one of those preventative measures, but.
If you're using it, and you.
But aren't we only gonna initiate an ACH fund transfer from our bank? I mean, I don't, we're not gonna go out to a vendor's site and put in our bank information. We're gonna go to our bank and initiate a transfer. It shouldn't matter as like.
I think.
We're not going to an online bill pay site like me as a resident, I log on to the city of mayor website and click pay my bill online. The city of mayor is not going to do that. We're gonna go to the bank and initiate a transfer, right? Like whatever that process is, I don't know if you have a form. I don't know if you can do it online. I don't know the specifics of that process, right? So whatever, I mean, security bank have multi-factor
So I, we're getting way too hung up over two words. I'm just going to be blunt, way too hung up over these two words because meaning doesn't change. If you want to strike it, that's fine, do it, because the meaning does not change.
So what happens if it's not available?
For employee portals and city internet should utilize multi-factor authentication when available.
The fact that it's like, yes, what happens if it's not available? What's the consequence? What's the purpose of it?
It's still password protected. It's not like it's free and clear.
What's the, what's the purpose of it?
To add another layer of security when it's available.
Available to us or just available for us?
Employees.
For employees.
Yes.
Not that means for us, people wise. I'm saying like, I would definitely guide us to be.
What do you want to do?
If you want, now that if we're going to have some conversation, if you don't mind coming up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm done.
You sure?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess.
If you change your mind, feel free. I I'm still struggling with it. And again, that's my maybe my misunderstanding, but maybe down below the accounts payable, section one A B, A B C, two A B C, maybe those are enough downstream things that will protect that if for some reason, but I think if it's two words, I'd rather have just say must must utilize multi-factor authentication. If it doesn't, we we can just cut a check, right?
Sure.
I mean, I'm 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 a little over cautious on some of this, just in obviously enlightened things. I mean, if.
Right.
This was a policy we were implementing three years ago. It wasn't heard much from me, but I'm being overly cautious.
And I'm kind of on the side of like, when available, I get what Nick's saying. If it's available, you use it. If it's not, you know, what do we do? So again, then is there something in there that says, right, if it's not available, we have to kind of check, which isn't in the policy? Like, because again, if it's not available, if we say you have to use it, well, what if it's not available? What are our options? And I don't know. Do we have to specify that? Or if I can't follow the policy and multi-factor it, then I can't use the policy. So then common sense says I have to do something different.
Yeah, because it just seems like if you're reading down, everything's covered. The council has to prove anything over fifty thousand. I mean, it seems like all of our bases are covered. It's just not going to be some random website. We're just gonna jolly off a hundred thousand dollars to without authenticating it.
Okay, but in the situation where we were victims of fraud.
Right.
What information did you have to make a good decision to wire that money to that account? I'm asking you, Chad, as a council member, to have approved that over fifty thousand dollars. Like, I can, I have to rely solely on the information Nick gives me.
Right.
Unless we're going to, right, like, so if Nick says I verified it, here's the email, I don't know that any one of us would have caught that the email was wrong, right? So we have to be.
And I would agree with that.
Right, we have to, like, I feel that we have to put the trust in the staff and give them a policy to follow so that we protect the citizens.
And I can.
And I see, right, like, I'm okay if we have to approve over fifty thousand. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I think five of us could have looked at it and not one of us could have caught it.
Agreed.
Because I don't know that, and I work in finance, and I don't know if Nick had sent that and said approve this wire, that I would have looked at the email address, that I would know what a right email address is, that five more eyes on this situation could have prevented anything. That's all I'm saying. And I I didn't mean to call you out, like, Chad, I don't think you would have.
No, and I I see what you're saying, and I agree with that. I can tell you, for me, the way this is set, we have a limit of fifty thousand. We're insured for fifty thousand. We'll be covered if something happened again, worst case. But if now council did, or if administrator did come to me and say, hey, I want to get authorized for seventy-five grand, my first question is going to be, does it utilize multi-factor authentication? If it doesn't, I'm going to vote no. I I mean, I just want to allow anything over the fifty fifty thousand.
Is this only electronic payments, check payments?
This is just our electronic.
Just electronic.
Payment policy. So for that reason, I'm okay with that wording.
I think the downstream adds to the when available, and then we can, we'll have to make different decisions if that's not available.
Can we have, when Christian comes in, just have him look at that and see what his recommendation and if they still believe that, get some of their input on that. I'm good with it now for that reason that we're covered, but I still would like to follow up on that. Something could change based on maybe the league's recommendations. Any further discussion?
The only other thing I would say is if we're going to go from, we've always paid in a check and we're going to now pay, you know, to change the method of payment that first go around, maybe that is a requirement of council approval to understand why are we changing, you know, have we done it and go like, I mean, I don't think we're sending a lot of ACH payments right, Nick. I don't know. Is it just an email to the council that says, hey, I'm going to do this as an FYI? And if anybody gets a little like, something doesn't feel right, then we have further discussions? Is that?
Well, we have our accounting clerk now, so that that could help with the two, you know, having two sets of eyes looking at it.
That are dealing with finance.
So just to make sure we're drawing lines on the appropriateness of where council comes in, you guys are a legislative body. Your role is not to get into the administration of things. That's why you pass policies for staff to follow and implement.
Okay.
And take care of. You're crossing that line into getting into administer administering the city instead of being a legislative body.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, consider approval of fire department policy update.
So we had talked about this couple, the last work session, a couple of work sessions, actually, and we've got all the updates in there. We've got the language in there regarding the seasonal firefighter position. Then we also have the tiered system for the paracredit approval, and that's exactly as it was when we looked at it at the last work session. So this should be ready to bring up for approval.
Perfect. Any questions for city administrator? Excuse me. If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the fire department policy update.
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Consider introduction of ordinance two thirty-eight amending the fee schedule.
So the only changes to the fee schedule we're looking at that was passed in July, it's for liquor licenses, as we discussed before, adjusting those down. And these are the amounts that we had looked, we had discussed about adjusting them to for liquor licenses. And then we are adding the golf cart license fee of twenty dollars annually.
Any questions on that? And I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance two thirty-eight amending the fee schedule with back paying for twenty twenty-three, the liquor license had already been submitted.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Consider introduction of ordinance two thirty-nine amending chapter seventy-two on golf carts.
This would be the final version that we have in front of us. It includes what we had talked about before, including the insurance and then hours of operation, which were from sunrise to sunset, and then can operate year round in that, and updated the golf cart permit application to include that language as well. And then this would be the final version of the handout that would go out to citizens who applied for a golf cart lesson or golf cart permit. So we have a plain language version of the ordinance, so they understand all the expectations.
All right. Any questions on that? I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance two thirty-nine amending chapter seventy-two on golf carts.
Motion.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion?
Is there, I'm sorry, is there no age limit?
Has to be sixteen or older.
So is that on there on this handout? Like, I thought we talked about that, but I think it needs to be on this handout.
Sure, we can, I can get that squeezed in there. Yep.
I'm sorry, Nick, I apologize. I threw that at you. I.
No, it's not in there.
Get a chance to read the council packet, so.
No, no, that can get included in there real quick.
Yeah, that'd be a good addition. And this, I think, is a great little brochure that you've created to hand out.
Agreed. And that's why I think it should be on there.
Yeah.
Right. Then there's no question.
Right. It's great. Any any operator has to be over sixteen or older, have a driver's license.
Yeah, I just make sure you put has a driver, you know, sixteen.
Because it says that in the application, right? From what I read.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but they may not read that.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, I know. But so we're going to do it in the handout. It makes sense.
I will get that included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to approval of summer hours for twenty twenty-three.
So each year, city council looks at a request from city staff in order to adjust the hours during the summer to the summer schedule, which includes working four nines, Monday through Friday, and then a half day on Friday. The hours to propose begin would be May, May twenty-second and then go through September eighth. So in contrast to last year, it was, so this emulates a week before Memorial Day and a week after Labor Day. In contrast to twenty twenty-two, it started a week before Memorial Day and went three weeks after Labor Day. So we're getting a week before and a week after, just to tighten that up.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the summer hours for twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can't.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
So, Nick, what are the standard hours for city hall now? Is it eight to?
Eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday.
And then the public works is?
Seven to three thirty.
Okay. And that's what we've always done, right?
Yep.
And there's no complaints at six AM of, I don't know, mowing lawn or?
No.
I'm good.
All right. I have a comment I was going to make and I can't remember what it was now. Oh, now, these are, when they get approved, an employee does not have to do this, though, correct? They can still work their forty hours if they so choose. They don't, they don't have to participate?
No, it's not. It's not a requirement to participate. It makes the option available.
Okay, they don't have to participate if they don't. I'm just thinking about the two new employees coming on and maybe they have different schedules, but we'd be fine. We'll just, yeah, okay. I just want to clarify that. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That'll take us to the advertising filling of vacancy on the EDA.
We have one opening on the EDA right now that was left by, now I'm blanking on his name, right as I'm trying to think of it, but we do have one vacancy on the EDA. My understanding in prior times, we would advertise for people who were interested in being on the EDA, then the EDA board would have those people come into a meeting, interview them, see who would they would like to have on the board, and then they would make a recommendation up to city council for appointment to that vacant position.
And I'm assuming you're just to the standard social media, perhaps so newsletter.
Throw something in the newspaper.
Works or something. Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'll look for a motion to advertise fill in the vacancy on the EDA board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Who's the council liaison on on EDA?
We are.
No, I'm not.
I am.
I'm not on it.
Chad and Peggy? Yep.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Text council reports, Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Ely.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hal.
Nope.
Councilmember McNeely.
No.
And I have nothing either. I don't have any.
At first.
Somehow.
Months.
So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second from Hal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned.